It's PM and we'll call the meeting to the Berkeley County Planning Commission to order. Sarah, can you roll call please?
Eric Gokenhour.
Here.
Linda Barnard.
Eric Goff.
Here.
Lieutenant Norton.
Present.
Tim Willis.
Present.
Daniel Dan.
Mr. Bush.
Here.
Ron Truitt.
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quan tonight so we can move on with the meeting. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda for this evening.
To approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Goff and a second by Mr. Gokenhour to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Sunshine Law Speakers, do we have anyone that's signed up for Sunshine Law Speakers?
I see two of us.
Okay. Are the people that signed up, are you to talk about a item that's on the agenda or is it something outside the agenda? On the agenda?
I'm on the agenda.
Okay.
I signed through.
Okay.
Make sure it's for the public hearing is one of those items.
Right. Yeah. Okay, so we'll move on then to approval of the minutes from July 17th.
To approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Goff and a second by Mr. Bush to approve the minutes from July 17th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been approved. Just so everyone knows, we have a pretty full agenda this evening. We have 11 public hearings and then we have 23 total items on our agenda night to cover. So if you're going to have comments in a public hearing, we ask that you keep your comments short. If you're in a homeowners association or a group that lives out there in that same area, that you do not come up and repeat the same thing that the person before you just said. We get it. We'll try to get through everybody, but we're trying to keep this meeting as short as we can and for the sake of everyone here. So we'll start with the public hearings. The first one on the agenda is Knight Town Road Lots.
Good evening, everyone. You have me tonight. Lawrence on vacation. Knight Town Road Lots, file number 2307-238. Spring Mill Apartments LLC is the developer. Foxon Associates is the engineer. It's in the Falling Waters District, Tax Map 16, Parcel 25. The site is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of TJ Jackson Drive and Knight Town Road, also known as West Virginia Route 8. This project proposes a creation of two single-family lots on 1.17 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The developer is requesting a waiver to Section 305.4.1 of the Berkeley County Subdivision Ordinance requiring a two-acre minimum lot side to proceed through the preliminary final plat process. Since both lots will be served by public water and sewer and will obtain a West Virginia DOH entrance permit or a common entrance, staff recommends approval of the waiver to Section 305.4.1.
Thank you, Dave. Do we have anybody to represent the project?
Good evening. Steve Cianovich with Foxon Associates, representing the applicant.
Steve, this is a public hearing. If you have any comments on Knight Town Road Lots, we ask you to come forward, state your name and your address, and sign in on the paper.
If there is no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Goff and a second by Mr. Gokenhour to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Planning Commission members, do you have any comments for Steve on the Spring Mill Apartments LLC?
No comments. I'm prepared to make a motion to accept staff recommendation and approve of the waiver. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour and a second by Mr. Goff to approve the staff recommendations for obtaining, for approval of waiver to Section 305.4.1. And with the, you're going to, you used to say with the State Highway Department permit?
Well, that was part of the recommendation.
Okay. Make sure that's in there. Any other comments from the Planning Commission members? Move vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. The next project is David McCormick.
David McCormick. Project 2307-249 tied to 2306-226. The developer is David McCormick. The surveyor is Polaris Land Surveying. The property is located in the Apeken District, Tax Map 16, Parcel 23. The site is located at 129 McCormick Lane on the north side of Shepherdstown Road, also known as West Virginia Route 45, approximately 900 foot east of the files crossroad Shepherdstown Road intersection. This project proposes a creation of three lots, DM1, 2.03 acres, DM2, 2.04 acres, DM3, 4 acres, to be served by private well insepting. The developer is requesting a waiver to Section 305.4.1 of the subdivision ordinance requiring West Virginia DOH road frontage to proceed through the preliminary final plat process. Since two out of the three proposed lots already have dwellings and private utilities and WD, West Virginia DOH has provided an entrance permit for the existing entrance, staff recommends approval to, of the waiver to Section 305.4.1 of the subdivision ordinance.
Do we have anyone to represent the project? David McCormick. Thank you, Dave. This is a public hearing. Do you have any comments you'd like to make about the David McCormick lots? We ask that you step forward, state your name and your address, and then share your comments.
If there are none, I move to close public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Goff and a second by Mr. Gokenhour to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. Do you have any questions for, Planning Commission members, do you have any questions for David on this project?
I have none. It's further in my notes how I see that there is already a 40-foot right-of-way there to the existing properties anyway, so that puts a lot of pressure. If you don't have anything else, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Make a motion. We accept staff recommendation for the approval of the waiver to Section 305.4.1 of the subdivision ordinance. Second.
Do we have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour and a second by Mr. Goff for approval of the waiver to Section 305.4.1 of the subdivision ordinance for the David McCormick lots? Planning Commission members, anyone else have any comments? Take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise for no. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Heritage Storage in Rock Cliff.
Heritage Storage at Rock Cliff. Project number 2306-227 tied to 2305-186. Developer is 53 LLC. The engineer is DA Stansbury. The project is located in the Hedgesville District, Tax Map 38C, Parcel 1. The site is located at 1955 Rock Cliff Drive, approximately six tenths of a mile from its intersection with Hedgesville Road, also known as West Virginia Route 9. The project proposes a self-storage facility on 1.7 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The developer is requesting a waiver to Section 801.1.10 of the subdivision ordinance requiring all driveways which provide ingress and egress to off-street parking areas to be paved. The waiver request is typical of a storage unit development plan and staff recommends approval to the waiver with the following conditions: accessible parking spaces and accessible route to the office shall be asphalt or concrete surfaces, that all stormwater management runoff volumes, quality, and quantity are designed for asphalt or concrete surfaces on all storage unit drives that are proposed to be gravel.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Sir Stansbury.
Good evening. How are you? This is a public hearing. Do you have any comments on the Heritage Storage, Storage at Rock Cliff Drive? We invite you to step forward, state your name and your address, and your comments for the Planning Commission.
If there are none, I move to close public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Goff to close the public hearing and a second by Ron Truitt to close. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. The public hearing is closed. Planning Commission members, do you have any questions for Doug on this project?
Here you go, sir. I make the motion. We accept staff recommendation for approval of the waiver with the following conditions: accessible parking spaces and accessible route to the office or asphalt and concrete surface, that all stormwater management runoff volumes, quality, and quantity are designed for asphalt or concrete surface of the storage unit drives that are proposed to be gravel. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour and a second by Mr. Bush to approve the staff recommendations for waiver of Section 801.1.10 of the subdivision ordinance requiring all driveways be paved with the conditions that the accessible parking spaces and accessible route to the office are asphalt or concrete and that stormwater management volumes are designed based on asphalt and concrete surfaces. Anyone else have any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
The next project is Dollar General Falling Waters.
Dollar General Falling Waters, Project 2210-298. The developer is AR Development. The engineer is The Thrasher Group. Project is located in Falling Waters District, Tax Map 14, Parcel 3. The site is located between Enneagram Drive and Hammond's Mill Road, also known as West Virginia Route 901, near the Potomac Station subdivision. This project is proposing a 9,026 square foot Dollar General on 1.15 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On July 24, 2023, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Do we have anyone here to represent the project this evening?
Brad Messer with The Thrasher.
Brad?
Andy Habig with ANR.
Andy, okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Do you have any comments you'd like to make about the Dollar General Falling Waters? We ask that you step forward, state your name and address, and sign in on the paper.
I have already signed in. My name's Heather Daly. I'm located at 34-
First name again?
Heather Daly.
Okay.
I'm located at 34 Ontario Drive in the Potomac Station Development. I'm here representing 212 townhouses, 104 single-family residences. In 2022, Clemens University released a report on Dollar General that stated putting a Dollar General near homes diminishes property value by 16 to 21%. I did a little rough math by Googling. The average taxes that are created currently on townhomes is $1,600 annually. The annual taxes that are collected on single-family homes currently is $2,200. With a 20% diminished revenue, that would go down to $1,280 on townhouses, $1,760 on single-family residences. This would represent a diminished intake of revenue by the county of close to $100,000. When you expand that report to Cardinal Point and the community behind the library, the county would be looking at close to $185,000 in lost revenue by the diminished value of the property value of our homes. All of these people at the Potomac Station residences strongly oppose this building.
Thank you, Heather. Anyone else with comments? Please step forward, state your name and your address.
There is no one else. I'll move to close public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Goff and a second by Mr. Truitt to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Public hearing is closed. Planning Commission members, do you have any questions for Brad or Andy on the project? If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion, either to accept staff recommendations or likewise.
Yes, sir. I'll make the motion. We accept staff recommendation for advancement of sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Go ahead. Okay. Have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour and a second by Mr. Goff to accept staff recommendations and advance the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage for the Dollar General Falling Waters. All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Next project is BW Quality Growers Spring
BW Quality Growers Spring Valley, Project 2305-172. The developer is BW Quality Growers. The engineer is Greenway Engineering. Project is located in the Apeken District, Tax Map 3, Parcel 11. The site is located at 3382 Williamsport Pike, also known as US Route 11, approximately 1,800 feet south of the intersection of Beddington Road, West Virginia Route 5, Knight Town Road, West Virginia Route 8, and Williamsport Pike, West Virginia Route 11. This project proposes a Watercrest farming facility on 20 acres. No utilities are being proposed. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On July 31, 2023, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project this evening?
Brooke Perry from Greenway Engineering, representing the applicant.
Thank you, Brooke. This is a public hearing. If you have any comments on the BW Quality Growers Spring Valley, we ask that you step forward, state your name and your address, and sign in so we have it for records.
If there is no one, I'll move to close public hearing.
Have a motion by Mr. Goff to close public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Truitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have any questions for Brooke on the project?
I think it's based on past experience, it's a pretty good place to grow.
Watercress.
Watercress. Water must be the water there. Spring water. You prepared for a motion, sir?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Make a motion. We accept staff recommendation in advance of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour and a second by Mr. Goff to accept staff recommendations and advance the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage. Any other questions from the Planning Commission members? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Brooke. The next item on the agenda is Appalachian Heating and Air.
Appalachian Heating and Air. Project 2305-181. Appalachian Heating and Air is the developer. Greenway Engineering is the engineer. Project is located in the Mill Creek District, Tax Map 3, Parcel 26. The site is located on Arden-Noville Road, approximately 0.71 miles northeast of its intersection with Jarrettstown Road, also known as West Virginia Route 51. The developer is proposing the relocation of Appalachian Heating and Air to the project site. The parcel is approximately 1.11 acres and will be served by public water and sewer. At the July 17, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Article 5, Section 503B, Table 5-2 of the subdivision ordinance requiring a 50-foot front setback for commercial projects running a collector roadway. On August 1, 2023, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Thank you, Doug. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Brooke Perry, Greenway Engineering, representing the applicant.
Thanks, Brooke. This is a public hearing. If you have comments on Appalachian Heating and Air, you're invited to step forward, state your name and your address, and any comments that you may want to share with the commission.
If there is no one, I move to close public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Goff and a second by Mr. Gokenhour to close public hearing. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Like sign for no. Motion carries. Planning Commission members, do you have any questions for Brooke on Appalachian Heating and Air?
Ms. Perry, is there anything in the site plan that's been submitted or a proposed note that would have a height restriction or story restriction in the construction of the building?
There's no current restriction, but there's no plans to go to two stories. Is that actively trying to be avoided?
Right. And the reason why I'm asking is at the waiver stage, there seem to be representations made to Stoneley HOA, which ultimately issued a letter in support of the waiver because of the configuration being one-story versus a two-story configuration. So I guess my question would be, you know, in respect for representations made to the commission and the Stoneley Homeowners Association, if there's no limitation in the site plan, what type of restriction would there otherwise be enforced in the future?
You're certainly correct that there's nothing limiting that. If the commissioners would like to see that note included, I'm sure that's something that my client would be happy to do.
Yeah. And that's something I'd like to see in a motion as this goes forward, be my personal preference.
Do you want to make that into form of a motion? Okay.
You can have it added to the site plan.
Okay.
Make sure the rest of the document is covered.
Yeah, that works for me. How about you?
Sure.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Do we make a motion?
Well, I thought we already had a motion. This is comments after. Yeah, right?
He agreed with what you said, but he has not yet made a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Alright, now do it.
I make a motion to recommend advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage, provided that there would be a story restriction or height restriction consistent with the proposed use of the property.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Bush, second by Mr. Goff to accept staff recommendations for advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan with a noted on the height restriction for the project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise for no. Motion carries. Thank you, Brooke. The next project is Marquee
Marquee Properties, File Number 2302-052. The developer is Nathan Marquee. The engineer is Greenway Engineering. It is located in the Arden District, Tax Map 15, Parcells 11 through 15. The site is located on the east side of, I'm sorry, this site is located east of the Tabler Station Road and West Virginia Avenue, also known as US Route 11 intersection. This project proposes a construction of a storage unit facility on approximately 3.73 acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the June 5, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Section 801.1.6.1B of the subdivision ordinance requiring drive aisles to be a minimum of eight feet from all property lines. On August 1, 2023, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Thank you, Doug. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Brooke Perry from Greenway Engineering, who represents the applicant.
This is a public hearing. If you have any comments on the Marquee Properties, we ask that you step forward, state your name and your address, and share your comments.
If there is no one, I move to public hearing. We close.
Have a motion by Mr. Goff to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gokenhour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's Mr. Truitt.
Mr. Truitt, I'm sorry about that.
I'm usually to your left.
Yeah.
We sound like-
Okay. Planning Commission members, do you have any questions for Brooke?
I mean, that's an existing commercial property right now with a car lot, is that correct?
Yeah.
Right. I propose to accept the sketch plan to, let me get straight out of there. I propose to accept what the staff recommendations to advance sketch plan to preliminary plan stage. Second.
Okay. Have a motion by Mr. Truitt to accept staff recommendations for advancement of sketch plan to the preliminary plan, and a second by Mr. Gokenhour. Planning Commission members, any other questions? We'll take a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Thank you. Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you very much.
The next project is the Reserve at Tuscarora, Section 1.
Yes. This is a request for final plat approval. The project is the Reserve at Tuscarora, Section 1, lots 1 through 2, 9, 20 through 37, and 41 through 45. The file number is 2304-136. The developer is Panhandle Homes. The engineer is Foxon Associates. It's located in the Arden District, Map 2, Parcells 4.3 and 7. This site is located along the north side of Tuscarora Pike, West Virginia Route 15, approximately a half a mile west of Interstate 81. The developer is proposing 26 single-family lots on approximately 44 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $887,490. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety and signed developers agreement.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Yes, good evening. Steve Cianovich with Foxon Associates, representing the applicant.
Thank you, Steve. This is a public hearing. If you have any comments on the Reserve at Tuscarora, Section 1, we invite you to step forward, state your name and your address, and share your comments.
Yes, sir. My name is Scott McIlroy. I live at 191 Showers Lane. I don't really have anything against what they're doing as long as they stick to the Tuscarora zoning rules and commitments. But what I was really concerned about when I looked into these things, when you all pass this, does everything that's in this and the required items get passed as well?
Yes.
If you're accepting the final plat, does all these notes down here, the required items, are they accepted as well? Because that's, that's the only part that I'm concerned about. We went through all this a year or so ago, however long it's been, and when you, when you get into the covenants and the restrictions of what's written, you get into Article 7, and they talk about basically allowing for the next 20, couple years, time for if Panhandle builders wants to change their mind and do something different, they can. But the problem is, in the, in Section 5.2, they're saying not more than 200 residents, which that's not what the Tuscarora zoning district is about. Then it gives Panhandle the right to change the development plan in the future in accordance with the Berkeley County Planning Commission subdivision regulations and the approval of the Berkeley County Planning Commission. But in nowhere does it ever state for the Tuscarora zoning rules and laws that are in effect. Then on the other, the next page, it talks about the construction of duplexes, which again, we were all, we understand that we didn't buy the property, and as long as it sticks to single-family homes, it doesn't deter the- So what I would like to see is some of this verbiage put in there to protect us who have bought and lived there 30-plus years. In Section 5.4, it says, "There's a special declarant," which is, of course, Panhandle Builders, "to complete any and all improvements, including by way of explanation and not limited to streets, roads, stormwater management, utilities, single-family homes, townhouses, and duplexes indicated on plats and plans filed with the declaration. Any supplemental declaration or reasonably anticipated and implied from the nature of the development." So again, in the beginning, when they wanted to do the 50-plus over thing, which I need to be in, again, it would be duplexes. So what I thought was odd was when I read through all these different pages in those first few articles, it never mentioned anything about the Tuscarora zoning. And of course, that's intact and in place, and is what supposedly is supposed to be stuck to. But when it gets into Article 11, then it talks about business use in a residential unit. And you start talking about that, "No trade or business may be conducted in or from any resident except that an owner or occupant residing in a residence may conduct business activities within the residence so long as the existence or operation of the business activity is not apparent or detectable by sight, sound, or smell from the outside of the unit." Then in Part B, it says, "The business activity confirms to all zoning requirements for the properties." So I thought it was odd that it mentions the zoning and so forth there, but then wanting to do duplexes or whatever, I understand there's a lot of money involved here, and I understand that you go into business to make a profit. But these are things that don't need to be in our area and for all of us who bought in that area. Then you've got, all through these articles, it talks about annexation. And I'm sure that if I was in that shoe, maybe I would think it, I don't know. But I'm sure because of the public water and sewer coming under 81 there at Tuscarora Creek and running back, and that's, we're going to cut across the fields there to do it. Then if it annexes into the city, then it's free rein to do whatever you want. And again, we just want, if they'll stick to the zoning ordinance, we would like the verbiage in here to protect us from that, because I'm afraid that if you approve this plat as it is, and it's the same thing on Section 2, it's in the same verbiage, same area, then it just knocks the zoning community out, and so that's all.
Thank you, Scott.
Yep, thank you all.
Anyone else like to speak from the public?
Good evening. My name is Dan Shergian. I sit here on showers lane at 15 showers lane. I'm also a member of the BCA. We approved this sketch. I can only repeat, and I know you all are under a lot of pressure to get this meeting underway. I have 33 years invested in my property. My thing is, is this going to be approved as is on August 1st of 2022? Because that's what a member, me, approved at a BCA. That's what I was under the impression was going to be built. A second area of concern in this sketch, and we were told, all the little notations on here says unplanned land or land usage, which is directly behind showers lane in the Stepco property. What is that going to be developed into? Is it going to be warehouses? Is it going to be such storage? Was an initial thought. Is it going to be townhouses? That is not part of our program on the ordinance we bought into. I would like you all to consider something like that before anything is approved. If that is not cleared up, I think the only just thing to do would be table the issue until other public hearings could be held, other decisions that could be made, and a commitment from the developer, what's going to be in this open area that is left unsolved. And I appreciate yours now.
Thank you, Dan. Is there anyone else from the public?
Yeah, my name is David Blake. I'm 298 Babylon, Brooklyn. And I really don't have anything, as long as it's all single-family homes, I don't have a problem with that. My problem is with the traffic from the 90 cars that'll be on those 45 lots. And if there's any way that either the Planning Commission can contact the state, VDOT, and have a study done to have us traffic late, put on showers lane, that's what I'm really concerned about.
Right. Thank you.
My big concern is the sewage lines run on my farm, and nobody has contacted me about hooking up. And I don't want my farm torn up. I mean, we rent it out, and it's a business in itself, and to have the fields tore up, and then it would have to go under the stream, which I understand is not kosher for running sewage lines. That was my concern.
Thank you. All right, thank, that's quite all right. I think we had one person back there, one of the...
My name is Philip Fierina, 75, Tamsin's Court, Chateau Gay. I agree with what Mr. McAvoy said, and the second gentleman. You can't have all these other restrictions that are stated, and because they do not comply with the Tuscarora Community zoning ordinance. And I assume we are still in the Tuscarora Community zoning ordinance. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The first hearing, there was 168 townhouses to close, plus a storage area. I got knocked down because we turned out. The last proposal was 45 lots. Now, the developer's been given permission to start moving dirt and clear the property. Has anything been decided on that property at this stage? Has anything been decided on that property on this stage?
Which property are you talking about? Huh? Which property?
Section 1.
Section 1.
Your head.
We'll get to that in a second. You want to finish your questions, then we'll answer the questions.
Okay. This property still falls under the Tuscarora Community zoning ordinance. Correct. Size of the lots in Chateau Gay are 1 acre plus. Size of lots in Mill Point are 1 acre plus. Size of lots in Mountain Brook are 1 acre plus. What's being proposed on these 45 lots is a half an acre or less. Who has determined that a half an acre or less, as in this plan, because you've all been working on this plan, meets the Tuscarora Community zoning ordinance? Anybody got an answer to that question?
We'll get the answers after you're finished.
Oh, okay.
We've got one more person who wants to speak, and then we'll try to answer all the questions at one time.
Okay. The other question is, what is the minimum square footage of the houses that are proposed on these house half-acre lots? Chateau Gay has a minimum of 1,800 foot, square foot on the first level, not including the garage. I'm sure Mountain Brook has a similar one, and so does Mill Point. So I guess I'm asking the developer, what is the square footage that's being put on these lots? And I can't see how you can approve this plan when you've got all these written things where they can come back in and put in condos, townhouses, or whatever. You've got to approve it either as a Tuscarora Community zoning ordinance, or you've got to change your ordinance. If you're going to change your ordinance, then there needs to be additional hearings about changing the ordinance, and it has to be clearly stated what's going to be on that property. I appreciate it. Thank you much. I look forward to your answer.
I'm Janet White. I'm at 688 Showers Lane, and I agree with the other gentlemen that spoke before. My concern also has to do with possible access off of Showers Lane for the one house that is determined within this plot to be right on Showers Lane. What kind of access? I haven't really seen any final drawings. You know, if this is going to be the reserve off of Tuscarora, it should stay off of there and not have access off of Showers Lane. I'd like to know what the plan is for that, if there is a plan, and also have to do with that to-be-determined property, which was about five or so acres.
17.
About 17 acres. You know, I don't like the ambiguity, and there needs to be some definition before we can approve that final piece of it from the community standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Any other comments from the public?
Steve Mathias, 700, Showers Lane, and I'll be brief. I hadn't planned on talking, but I've been here for the past couple hearings, and nobody's brought this up, and it's White just sort of touched on it, is with this residue property, how are they going to get, what's the access to the residue property? Is it going to be Showers Lane, or is it going to be off of Tuscarora Pike? I don't think the plan as submitted now provides for access off of Tuscarora Pike, so we're going to be back in here in the future, dealing with access from the residue parcel on Showers Lane, which doesn't need any more traffic. And we're already close to the stoplight down there, 181. I just hope that you'll examine this issue before you approve the final plat. Thank you.
Steve, any other comments from the public?
If there are no other comments, I move to close the public hearing.
Have a motion for Mr. Goff to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Truitt. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Likewise for no. Public hearing is now closed. Okay, Steve, you've got a lot of questions to answer.
I tried to take some notes, so let me take them one at a time here.
Yeah.
First of all, the sketch plan that was approved by this planning commissioner was for 45 single-family lots. All the lots, including lot size, setback, road right-of-way, et cetera, are in conformance with the published Tuscarora zoning district requirements. The minimum lot area for a single-family lot in the Tuscarora, per the Tuscarora zoning district requirements, is 20,000 square feet. All of our lots match that criteria. This Planning Commission also approved a preliminary plan for the Reserve at Tuscarora project that was a mirror of the sketch plan that you approved. Again, 45 single-family lots, 44 of which are accessed via Tuscarora Pike. We do have a Division of Highways permit for that access. If we didn't, we wouldn't have had, been granted preliminary plat approval. I'd also like to mention, some people spoke, just to be clear, that construction has started on the project. Therefore, we have met all the prerequisite requirements to obtain a grading permit. All permits in hand, bonds posted, easements recorded. There's 11 NPDES permit issued. All the prerequisite requirements that have been fulfilled allow the developer to go to construction. One gentleman spoke about a concern with sewer and accessing his farm to get sewer. There's a line that runs from Tuscarora Pike in a northerly direction, an existing sanitary that runs in a northerly direction and crosses underneath Tuscarora Creek. We're tying into this sanitary system. On the developer's property, there are no off-site easements that were needed. Again, the line exists, has existed through the property for many years, and we're tying into it. I would like to be clear that of the 45 lots, 44 are, again, accessed via Tuscarora Pike. Lot 45 is a single-family lot that is contiguous to Showers Lane, and the plan is, as it's denoted on the approved preliminary plan, is to have a driveway onto Showers Lane. We obtained the Division of Highway entrance permit. It's actually a driveway permit, so this can't be a full movement, you know, entrance for the subdivision. It's a driveway for a single home. And that permit has been obtained by the West Virginia Division of Highways, and was included as a part of the preliminary plan approval, and also the subsequent materials that were submitted in order to gain or receive the grading permit for this project. As far as the covenants restriction, I believe this gentleman was speaking from, that was prepared by the developer's attorney. I'll certainly have a dialogue with that individual, but those covenants restrictions are reviewed by Berkeley County Attorney's Office, County Attorney, and recommendations are granted, and that's normally done at the time we file for the final plat approval, which precedes me standing here, because in order to get to the podium tonight to seek your approval, we had to obtain, address all comments from staff. We had to go through a final plat determination meeting, which we did over a month ago now. Unless I missed something on my notes, I talked about the DOH permits, talked about sewer, I talked about covenants restrictions. Again, I can't emphasize enough, oh, there is one other thing. There is a remaining land on the project, and there's also a buffer proposed, a landscape buffer, a 50-foot width along the entire lots that front Showers Lane, but the rear of their properties have butted the subject property you're acting on tonight. That 50-foot buffer is going to be a planted buffer, and we also included a separate line item in our bonding estimate to ensure that when the bond's posted for this final plat, that the cost associated with planting that buffer was included in the estimate presented to staff, which staff subsequently approved that estimate. Unless I missed something, I think I addressed everything that these folks mentioned this evening. If not, I'd be happy to...
I think I remember somebody asked about square footage. I don't believe that I remember seeing anything in them.
At this point, we show a building envelope. That building envelope will be consistent with the Tuscarora zoning district, front, side, and rear setbacks. As far as the Tuscarora zoning ordinance, which I believe goes back to 1975, and I haven't read it for a while, but I didn't believe that there was, and maybe I'm wrong, that there was a house square footage requirement, but there could have been a house square footage requirement within the covenants and restrictions of these adjacent communities that these folks spoke about this evening. But again, without reading that 1975 ordinance, again, I don't recall a specific call-out or square footage of the house. or square footage of the house within the Tuscarora zoning district, but most likely, it's probably contained in the covenant restriction from one of the adjacent subdivisions that occurred prior to me being here this evening.
Doug, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, the only other question that I heard that we really didn't cover was, just reading the DOH and the traffic signals, this development did not increase the threshold or overcome the threshold. They even have a traffic study in DOH, and the volumes and trip generations are such that it would not even begin to generate warrants for a signal. So DOH had no interest, no interest, and did not require any more information.
I just have one other question. They talked about the remaining lands. That remaining land is also in the Tuscarora zoning district.
That's correct.
So it would have to comply with the document, or the outline in the zoning ordinance for future development.
You're absolutely correct. Any future development of the, quote, "remaining lands," we go back to sketch, we have a public hearing. But then, if it gets advanced, and we go to preliminary plan, where there would be a meeting, not necessarily a public hearing, then there would be a final plat, again, a determination and a public hearing. But to my knowledge, we don't have any plans. Again, the sketch that was done before, 45 single-family lots, preliminary plan, 45 single-family lots. So anything the developer may propose, number one, it would have to be in conformance with the Tuscarora zoning district. Number two, it would have to go back effectively to the beginning, and we go through sketch, preliminary, and final plat again, give everyone an opportunity to voice their concerns about what the developer may want to do. Again, with these buffers, and you know, there's some topo issues, topography issues out there, there's wetland issues out there. The remaining lands may be a large acreage, but a lot of that is really unusable due to some encumbrances that are on it. Buffer's a good example, the planting buffer. The other is, you know, conservation areas, and wetland buffers and stream buffers and things of that nature. So just because the remaining lands is a relatively large acreage, it doesn't mean that that's developable acreage. Again, I can't emphasize enough, lies within the Tuscarora zoning district. Unless we went to the Board of Appeals to seek a waiver on some requirement of that, we would be bound to the requirements of the Tuscarora zoning district. And the plat before you this evening meets the requirements of the Tuscarora zoning district.
Steve, just a concern that was raised with regard to the residue or the open areas, or any forethought provided as to access to that piece? Would it be through the proposed development or another highways permit applied for modified the original entrance permit? Any thought to that?
Sure. With Lot 45 being created, that's the lot that is contiguous to Showers Lane. That lot consumes all the frontage of this property. It's now contiguous, Lot 45 will be contiguous to Showers Lane. You can't get from Showers Lane to the balance of the property unless you go through the lands of Lot 45, which I understand there's a party already interested in that, because they obviously like the Showers Lane area and it's a much more good. As far as access, the Division of Highways permit is very clear that if there's any change to the 45 lots that they approved, we have to go back to them. The permit becomes null and void. We have to go through the exercise again. But to answer your question as asked, there are some small gaps in the lots that would provide access to the remaining lands.
On Phase 1 and 2.
On Phase 1 and 2, but it wouldn't be via Showers Lane.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
If you have any other questions for Steve?
Yeah, I absolutely, you know, the phone calls that I have received on this project recently, just like you, I refer right back to the zoning ordinance. It has to be in compliance with the zoning ordinance, even more so than this subdivision regulations. The zoning ordinance is top dog.
Correct.
So could you calm their fears when you talk about townhomes and duplexes? Because that is not consistent with the Tuscarora zoning district, to my understanding.
That's my understanding as well, that if the uses are limited to single-family residential with a 20,000-square-foot minimum lot size. I'll be honest with you, I didn't read that covenants and restrictions as it wasn't prepared by our office, and I'm kind of shocked by, and again, I didn't read it, I'm kind of shocked that it makes reference to townhomes and villas when they're specifically not permitted, principal permitted use within the Tuscarora zoning district. I'll certainly need to look into that, or let the developer know that that was one of the biggest concerns at the meeting here this evening.
Any other comments from the planning commission members? I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we accept staff recommendation for final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $887,490, plat to be released upon receipt of surety, and that this project is consistent with the Tuscarora zoning regulations. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Goode, can I, or a second by Mr. Bush, to accept staff recommendations for final plat approval contingent on receipt of surety in the amount of $887,490, said plat to be released upon surety, and that the subdivision meets all of the criteria in the Tuscarora zoning ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise for no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next is the Reserve at Tuscarora, Section 2.
Yes. Request for final plat approval, Reserve of, excuse me, Reserve at Tuscarora, Section 2, lots 3 through 8, 10 through 19, and 38 through 40. File number is 2304-137. The developer is Panhandle Homes, the engineer is Fox and Associates, located in the Arden District, tax map 2, parcels 4.3 and 7. The site is located along the north side of Tuscarora Pike, West Virginia Route 15, approximately a half a mile west of Interstate 81. The developer is proposing 19 single-family lots on 29.54 acres to be served by public water and sewer. Final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $355,530, plat to be released upon receipt of surety and signed developer's agreement.
Again, this is a public hearing. I'm assuming that all of you would like to have your comments carried over to the second public hearing.
Yeah, I would just say, just the covenants and the restrictions part of it, and I realize that Fox wouldn't do that, this was Mr. Barton, who turned it to the family. There's so much garbage in there that doesn't follow the Tuscarora zoning.
Thank you.
And that's our concern.
Any other comments from the public?
If there are no other comments, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Goff, and a second by Mr. Truitt, to close the public hearing on the Reserve at Tuscarora, Section 2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise for no. Public hearing is closed. Planning Commission members, do you have any questions for Steve?
Greg, I'm sure I'll make the motion, we accept staff recommendation, final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $355,530, plat to be released upon receipt of surety, and consistent with the Tuscarora zoning district regulations. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Goode, can I, or a second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendations for final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $355,330, said plat to be released upon receipt of surety, and that the plat meets all Tuscarora zoning requirements. All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise for no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Southbrook, Section 2.
Yes, this is a request for final plat approval. The project is Southbrook, Section 2, Phase 1, lots 160 through 185, and townhouse lots 92 through 129. The file number is 2304-138. The developer is Chandler's Glen LLC, the engineer is Gordon. It's located in the Mill Creek District, map 3, parcel 9. The property is located on Shiley Road, County Route 34 over 2, approximately 0.3 miles north of Hatchery Road, County Route 11 over 8. This phase proposes 26 single-family lots and 38 townhouse lots on approximately 14.8 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $1,415,214, plat to be released upon receipt of surety and completed developer's agreement.
Thank you, Bonney. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Jason Gerhart with Integrity Federal Services, and Hunter Wilson at the Development.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If you have comments on Southbrook, Section 2, we ask you to step forward, state your name and your address, sign in, and share your comments.
My name is Jennifer Berger, and I live at 126 Coiser Lane in Enwood. Our subdivision, Fox Chris and Hannah subdivision, is just, you know, we're impacted by the Southbrook subdivision, and the concern that our community has is whether or not a traffic study was done by the Department of Highways with the increased traffic, the first section of Southbrook, you know, is already there. We've had some issues on Hatchery Road, and now we're, you know, there's another, you know, 38 townhomes and 26 other homes that are being proposed to be built, and so the question is whether or not a Department of Highways traffic study was done, and how this is going to be accessed without any changes to Hatchery Road.
Thank you, Janet.
My name's Allison McKee, and I live at 38 Kaiser Lane.
First name again.
Allison McKee. I live at 38 Kaiser Lane, which is the gravel private driveway that runs right beside the new part of Southbrook that's supposed to be built. We started questioning the development when Phase 1 was launched, because it is a private road. It is only four homes on it, my mom, myself, and two other families. And we were given plans that we saw where this road was going to come out onto my mom's driveway. And my mom is elderly, my husband is disabled, and we still have to take our mail and our trash down our driveway to Hatchery Road. And when we questioned this, we were told that they were going to cut off the bottom of our driveway with the development, and we would have to go through the development to get out onto Hatchery Road. I don't feel that my mom should have to do that. That driveway's been there since the 40s. It's never been a problem. It's never, there's never been an issue in it. I don't feel that they should be on my property, my mom's property. We've already had to stop the builders from coming up a private driveway. We've already called developers and told them it is private drive. So our concern is how exactly is this being? How exactly are they coming onto Hatchery Road? And are they taking part of my mom's property? Because if so, they can buy it.
Thank you, Janet. Anyone else from the public?
If there are no other public comments, I move to close the public hearing.
My name's Sarah Holt. We're at 461 Hatchery Road. We just moved there a couple weeks ago, actually, with the intent of it being a rural area. I have livestock, other animals that you're bringing down there, and I have a lot of liability concerns of houses moving close to our fence. You know, because if someone puts their hand through the fence, pings over the fence, our fault, regardless of what they do or not. Someone feeds our livestock, something they're not supposed to do. Again, we're at fault. We have things to pay for that they're not going to pay for. And again, I wanted to also touch on the traffic issue. Traffic's already terrible in there. I've already almost been in an accident multiple times pulling out of our driveway, and I do know every single sign for Southbrook filters through Hatchery Road. And then I also just had some questions about what exactly is going next to our property, because the only thing that I saw listed out was the townhomes up close to the first section. There is no plans listed on the map directly around our property, so I just want to know what they're planning on putting around their house. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public, comments? Mr. Goff will take that motion.
If there are no other comments, I move to close the public hearing. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Goode, to close the public hearing. All those in favor, aye. Likewise for no. Public hearing is closed. Okay, public and planning commission members, do you have any questions for Jason or Hunter, and then maybe they can answer some of the questions that were raised by the citizens this evening?
Sure. I'll try and at least address the questions that were presented thus far. So there was a traffic study done that's been approved by Department of Highways for the full buildout of Southbrook, including the future phases, and all of the entry permits, two on Shiley and one on Hatchery, has been fully permitted, executed, and are under instructions of the Hatchery side of starting construction. This section that we're talking about is the last group of lots that will access the Shiley Road entrances without the connection being built through Hatchery that will provide an internal connection for Southbrook residents to have full access to both sides, to Shiley and Hatchery. The Kaiser Lane is off of the Southbrook property. Department of Highways, when we were doing our Hatchery Road entry permit, required us to provide a stub to allow them to connect to our road system if they chose to. We have no right to cut off their driveway. Their driveway will stay as it is with no changes. We've just provided a paved access up to our property lines that we'll be able to use in the future if they choose to do that. So we're not proposing to cut them off. We can try to provide some more signage and directions to the contractor, make sure no vehicles accidentally go down their lane, they should not be accessing them. That's why we have our own construction entrance on Hatchery and through the existing development. So we'll certainly make sure that is conveyed to the contractors doing work not to be using their driveway, but we're not taking any land, we're not using the driveway, we're just trying to provide the opportunity for access for our section.
That would be a requirement of DOH because of site distance to Hatchery.
And then the last question was about the property at 461 Hatchery Road. So the section that we're talking about right now for the public hearing tonight is not the section adjacent to that property, but that will be coming up at a future meeting here in about a month. So we're happy to go through what's being proposed there, but that's basically the backyard, and also some smaller facilities to control a runoff there. I'm not sure what else we can answer on that, but that's what's going to be proposed there for the next section.
Thank you, Jason. Planning Commission members, do you have any questions for Jason or Hunter? If not, all intent of motion.
Sure.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we accept staff recommendations for final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $1,415,214. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety and completed developer's agreement.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bush and a second by Mr. Bush to accept staff recommendations on the final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $1,415,214. Set plat to be released upon receipt of surety and a completed developer's agreement. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Likewise for no, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And finally, the last public hearing of the evening is Communities of Burwell, Phase 8.
Yes, this is a request for final plat approval. Communities of Burwell, Phase 8, lots D2 through D10, D9 through D24, and G22. The file number is 2112-442. The developer is Burwell Properties LLC. The surveyor is Robert Land Surveying. It's located in the Falling Waters District, map 13, parcel 10.4. The site is located on Knight Town Road, West Virginia Route 8, approximately one mile from its intersection with Weaver Lane, West Virginia Route 11 over 7. This phase proposes 26 single-family lots on 9.8 acres to be served by public water and sewer. Final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $419,244. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety and signed developer's agreement.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Mike Roberts, representing the project.
This is a public hearing. If you have any comments you'd like to make about the communities of Burwell, you're invited to step forward, state your name and your address, and share your comments.
There are no comments. I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Goff, a second by Mr. Bush, to close the public hearing. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Likewise, a sign for no, motion carries. Public hearing is closed. Planning Commission members, do you have any questions for Mike on the project?
I have one. I guess I'm going to speak up. Mike, at the last meeting on July 17th, we brought up about the Boulevard entrance into Burwell. Only one section of that is finished. The other side's not finished. And I think that statement was made that the developer was going to work on that to try to get something done before school started.
I didn't say before school started. I said that we had physically and feel laid out the new entrance locations. Do not have a timeline when they're being constructed, but they are in the works.
All right, thanks. I just, you know, I know you're out there and you see it, but it is a hazard to a lot of young kids waiting to get on that bus and get off that, getting off those buses in the evenings. Is there anything that you can do to help the developer to speed that along a little bit? Would be greatly appreciated by those.
That was part of the phone call with them today. They are aware of the urgency to get that done.
Okay. And now it's even tougher because you've got the schools to deal with. School buses, parents pulling up there, parking on both sides. You can't get through. You know, I'm not of the development, but I just have people tell me it's a real challenge. And it started over today for them. So I got a few phone calls this morning.
It'd be nice to work with the school district and get the bus off the road into the subdivision to pick up the children instead of.
Out on the highway.
Some of the buses won't go into Burwell. That question was asked.
They will or won't?
They will not because the cul-de-sacs are not large enough. And so the only thing they could do is utilize the boulevard to make a U-turn, which would be better than sitting at night to hood later way. But that second boulevard, the second half of it, if you will, is not tied to any D O H requirements or anything. That should be dealt with daily and by.
Chair, those comments for developers, see what we can get done. Planning Commission members, do you have any other questions?
I have a motion to accept staff recommendations for final plat approval for the subdivision surety in the amount of $419,244. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety and signed developer's agreement.
I have a motion by Mr. Bush and a second by Mr. Goff to accept staff recommendations for final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $419,244. Set plat to be released upon receipt of surety and a signed developer's agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise for no, motion carries. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
That concludes our public hearings for the evening. We'll now move to item 7, preliminary plan approval. First on is Washington Heights, Section 2.
Washington Heights, Section 2, file number 2201-001. The developer is Phil Cogru Investments LLC. The engineer is DA Stansberry. Project is located in the Arden District, tax map 18, parcel 9.11. This site is located on Sir Washington Street, approximately 1/4 mile west of Winchester Avenue, US Route 11. The developer is proposing 29 single-family detached and 20 villa lots, 49 total, on approximately six acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On April 7, 2022, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends advancement of the preliminary plan to the final plat stage.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Dirk Stansberry, representing the project.
Thank you, Dirk. Planning Commission members, do you have any questions for Dirk? Gordon, Washington Heights, Section 2. Does this come out right with the stoplight?
No.
No.
This comes out on the Sir Washington, existing Section 1.
Okay.
This is the back end of Washington Heights.
Okay. All right. I thought maybe when I looked at it, I thought it would come out there.
No, it's because Washington Heights is still about 200 yards short of that.
Short of, okay.
Which.
Any other comments from the Plan Commission? Not all, entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to advance the preliminary plan to final plat stage.
I have a motion by Mr. Bush and a second by Mr. Goff to accept staff recommendations for advancement of the preliminary plan to the final plat stage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, no, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dirk. Next on is CMC Steel, West Virginia, Phase 1.
CMC Steel, West Virginia, Phase 1. File number 2305-179. Developer is Commercial Metal Companies. The engineer is Gulf States Engineering. Project is located in Falling Waters Tax District, tax map 14, parcel 34. The site is located on Dupont Road in a portion of the old Dupont Powder Facility, approximately 0.75 miles southeast of the intersection of Dupont Road and Williamsport Pike, also known as US Route 11. This project proposes the construction of a micro steel mill and associated buildings, roadways, utilities, and stormwater management. The entire site is approximately 208 acres and will be served by public water and sewer. Phase 1 consists of a 475,000 square foot building area, 244 parking spaces, and 19 acres of stormwater management areas. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On July 14, 2023, county engineer Doug Smith found the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Dirk. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Good evening. It's Christian Fisher with CMC.
Planning Commission members, do you have any questions for Christian on CMC Steel, West Virginia?
Ms. Fisher, just for informational purposes, this facility may be compared to other CMC facilities. What consideration is given to any kind of noise for surrounding areas? I mean, obviously, it's a large piece of property, but it's also a large facility. So I wondered, sort of consistent with noise expectations within the county, what thought has been given to that?
Yeah, there's a tremendous amount of time and effort that goes into the noise engineering. It's actually a pretty quiet process. So we have like an oxygen plant inside, it's really quite quiet. You know, it's, we would all assume the manufaction of steel is loud, but it's not. Trucks and heavy equipment is really the loudest. But we do sound engineering, which should have been there.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Not all, entertain a motion.
Make the motion that we accept the preliminary plan. It does meet the requirements of the subdivision ordinance.
Second.
Do we have a motion by Mr. Bush and a second by Mr. Goff to accept staff recommendations for approval of the preliminary plan and the requirements of the subdivision ordinance? All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise for no, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Butler's Crossing, out parcels 4 and 5.
Butler's Crossing, out parcels 4 and 5, file number 2304-144. Developer is Ferber Construction Management, DOR. The engineer is Integrity Federal Services. Project is located in Mill Creek District, tax map 6, parcel 55.5, 55.6. The site is located on the southwest corner of Middleway Pike, also known as West Virginia Route 51, and Sofronia Boulevard intersection. The project proposes a single building containing three built-to-suit commercial spaces, out parcel 4, and a convenience store with automatic fueling stations, out parcel 5. Both parcels will be served by public water and sewer. At the January 18, 2021, excuse me, at the January 18, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Article 8, Section 801, Table 8.1B of the subdivision ordinance to allow parking to be based on Category 16. B, general retail. Contingent upon a general note to the plat, parking provided is on a shared basis at 5.1 per 1,000 square feet gross floor area per I T E Land Use Code 820. At the January 17, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Article 8, Section 801, Point 1, Point 6, Point B of the subdivision ordinance to allow a reduction of the parking and drive aisle setbacks from 8 to 0 feet for the lot lines separating out parcels 4 and 5. On May 15, 2023, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends approval of the preliminary plan.
Thank you, Dirk. Do we have anyone here to represent the project this evening?
Hello, Ben Stedlow with Integrity Federal Services, representing the project.
Ben. Planning Commission members, do you have any questions for Ben on Butler's Crossing, out parcels 4 and 5?
I propose that we accept the staff recommendation for the preliminary plan that meets the requirements of the subdivision.
I have a motion by Mr. Truitt and a second by Mr. Goff to accept staff recommendations for approval of the preliminary plan. Any further discussion? Now we'll take a vote. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Likewise for no, motion carries. Thank you, Ben. The next item on is item 8. We have six items on the final plat. The first is Sunny Ridge Overlook.
This is a request for preliminary final plat approval. The project is Sparrow's Sunny Ridge Overlook. The file number is 2303-076. The developer is Patricia W. Sparrow. The surveyor is Keller Engineering. It is located in the Hedgesville District, map 28, parcel 16. The project is located on the east side of West Virginia Secondary Route 4, Ridge Road, 1.1 miles south of intersection with West Virginia Secondary Route 9. The project proposes the creation of three residential lots on five acres to be served by public water and private septic. At the February 21, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Section 305.4.1 of the subdivision ordinance 2009, requiring a two-acre minimum lot size to proceed through the preliminary final plat process. On July 17, 2023, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance 2009. The project is compliant with the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plat.
Do we have anyone here to represent the project this evening?
I'm Michelle Sparrow, at Sparrow's daughter.
Okay, thanks. Planning Commission members, do you have any questions for Fisher on the Spur of Sunny Ridge Overlook?
I make the motion that we accept staff recommendation for approval, preliminary final.
Motion by Mr. Bush and a second by Mr. Truitt to accept staff recommendations for approval of the preliminary final plat. All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, no, motion carries. Thank you, Christian. Next item, Mills, preliminary final.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary final plat approval. The project is Mills subdivision, file number 2304-141. The developer is Craig Mills. The surveyor is Robert Land Surveying. It's located in the Arden District, map 19, parcel 6.3. The project is located on Airport Road, West Virginia, excuse me, West Virginia Secondary Route 19 over 1, approximately 1 1/2 mile northeast of its intersection with near Bethel's Way, West Virginia Secondary Route 34 over 1. The project proposes the creation of two residential lots on approximately 12.13 acres to be served by public water and sewer. On July 24, 2023, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance 2009. The project is in compliance with the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plat.
Thank you, Ben. Do we have anyone here to represent the project?
Mike Roberts, representing the project.
Mike? The Planning Commission members, do you have any questions for Mike on the Mills subdivision?
Mike, I can't tell by the small print in my poor eyes, how much acreage is our piece lot?
Approximately about 6 acres a piece.
Okay, so you're taking the 12 acres and splitting it.
Yeah, basically splitting it in there.
I thought maybe there's a residue.
No.
Okay, thank you.
It's too long.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions?
Just clarification, the lot on the south side of Airport Road will not be served by public water. She has an approved subject location of that lot D.
Yes, correct.
And it has been approved by County Health.
If there are no questions, I make the motion to accept the preliminary final plat.
I have a motion by Mr. Bush and a second by Mr. Goff to accept staff recommendations for approval of the preliminary final plat. Any other comments? We'll take a vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise for no, motion carries. Thanks, Mike. Next on the list is Snap Family.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary final plat approval. The project is Snap Minor Subdivision. The file number is 2304-119. The developer is Snap Family LLC. The surveyor is Robert Land Surveying. It's located in the Hedgesville District, map 15, parcel 15. The project is located on the east side of McCoy's Ferry Road, West Virginia Route 2 over 2, approximately 2,000 feet south of. Over Two, approximately two thousand feet south of its intersection with B and O Overpass Road, West Virginia Route Two. The project proposes the creation of one four-and-a-half acre residential lot and a thirty-eight point six-five acre residue to be served by private well and septic. On July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance two thousand nine. The project is in compliance with the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plat.
Anyone to represent the project?
Yes.
Mike Roberts. Plank Commission Members, do you have any questions for Mike on Snap Minor Subdivision?
I propose that we accept the staff recommendation for approval of preliminary to the final plat.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Truitt, and a second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendations for approval of the preliminary final plat. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, no, motion carries. Thanks, Mike. Next item is McPhillan, Lot Two.
This is a request for preliminary final plat approval. The project is McPhillan, Lot Two. The file number is twenty-two oh eight dash two thirty-nine. The developer is Marion V. McPhillan. The surveyor is Fox and Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, Map Thirteen, Parcel Four. This site is located north of Rock Drive, east of Harland Springs Road. This project proposes the creation of a thirty-three point seven acre parcel, Lot Two, with a twelve-point-four acre residue to be served by private well and public sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval stating a review of the above-mentioned project has been complete and was found to be in compliance with the subdivision ordinance. The project is found to be in compliance with the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance two thousand nine, therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plat.
Thank you, Ben. Do we have anyone here to represent the project?
Yes, Steve Sianovich, Fox and Associates, representing the applicant.
Thank you, Steve. Plank Commission Members, do you have any questions for Steve on the McPhillan Lot
No question. Like the motion, we accept staff recommendation for approval of the preliminary final.
Have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, and a second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendations for approval of the preliminary final plat. Any further discussion? If not, we'll make a motion for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, for no, motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. The next item is Miracle Lane.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary final plat approval. The project is Miracle Lane. The file number is twenty-three oh five dash one eighty-three, tied to twenty-three oh one dash zero zero four. The developer is Three-O-Four Investments. The surveyor is Ascent Consulting and Engineering. It's located in the Hedgesville District, Map Thirty-Six, Parcel Fourteen. The project is located west of Cushwall Road, approximately point four-four miles off of Upperhead Lane. This project proposes the creation of one two-acre residential lot and a nine-point-four acre residue to be served by well and septic. At the February sixth, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Section Three-O-Five Point Four Point One of the subdivision ordinance two thousand nine, requiring WBDOH road frontage to proceed through the preliminary final plat process. Contingent upon a road maintenance agreement prior to preliminary final plat approval, that road maintenance agreement was provided on July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. On July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval stating a review of the above-mentioned project had been complete and was found to be in compliance with the subdivision ordinance. The project is found to be complete, in compliance with the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance two thousand nine, therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plat.
Thank you, Ben. Does anybody want to represent the project?
Good evening. My name is Steve Cunningham. I'm the applicant.
Thank you, Steve. Plank Commission Members, do you have any questions for Steve on Miracle Lane? I just have one small, is that lot divided through the Miracle Lane? Is it one, a little bit on one side and majority on the other side?
Correct.
To make up the two acres?
Correct.
Steve, the notes that we have here in reference to having a shared septic system, that goes, is attached to the plat, to the D?
When we purchased this property, there was a claim that there were three residences on one parcel, which made it a violation some Berkeley County. We're splitting it with one residence with its own well and septic on the two-acre lot. The remainder has a single-family residence with a garage that was kind of hodgepodge turned into an apartment. That's the shared septic system. The house and the garage will remain on the nine acres with one septic system, not shared with the two-acre parcel.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Doug.
There were conditions by the health department for the septic, and there's a reflect, even there in Silver Road. We, it's, we were trying to get it across to the new owners there. Were they likely to use septic systems already at capacity, or were they like the mail city?
Did we need to take a garage and turn it into an apartment?
It probably didn't help we're undoing that.
Yeah, you're kind of making it a little better than what it was.
I hope so.
I propose that we accept the staff recommendation for approval of the preliminary to the final plat.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Truitt, and a second by Mr. Gokenhour, to accept staff recommendations for approval of the preliminary final plat on the Miracle Lane. Any further discussion? Take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, for no, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The final preliminary final plat for the evening, David McCormick.
Request for preliminary final plat approval. The project is David McCormick. File number is twenty-three oh six dash two twenty-six, tied to twenty-three oh seven dash two forty-nine. The developer is David McCormick. The surveyor is Valorous Lance Surveying. It's located in the Opecan District, Map Sixteen, Parcel Twenty-three. The site is located at one-twenty-nine McCormick Lane, on the north side of Shepherdstown Road, West Virginia Route Forty-five, approximately nine hundred feet east of the Falls Cross Road, Shepherdstown Road intersection. This project proposes the creation of three lots, DM One, which is two-point-zero-three acres, DM Two, which is two-point-zero-four acres, and DM Three, which is four acres to be served by private well and septic. At the August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Section Three-O-Five Point Four Point One of the subdivision ordinance two thousand nine, requiring WBDOH road frontage to proceed through the preliminary final plat process. Excuse me, on August tenth, two thousand twenty-three, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance two thousand nine. The project is compliant with the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary final, excuse me, preliminary final plat.
Thank you, Ben. Do we have anyone to represent the project? Dave McCormick. Dave. Plank Commission Members, do you, does anyone have any questions for Dave on this project?
Very good. Like the motion, we accept staff recommendation for the approval of the prelim final.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, and a second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendations for approval of the preliminary final plat. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, for no, motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is final plat determinations. The first of the three is Willow Glen, Section One.
Willow Glen, Section One, Phase One, lots one through thirty-six, sixty-five through seventy, and one fifty-eight through one seventy-seven. Project file two-three-zero-six dash two-two-nine. Developer is MDG WG Incorporated. The engineer is Integrity Federal Services. It's located in the Mill Creek District, Tax Map Six, Parcel Seventy-three. The project is located on Middleway Pike, State Route Fifty-One, approximately one mile east of Interstate Eighty-One. This project proposes the creation of sixty-two lots on ten-point-zero-seven acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the July sixth, two thousand twenty-two Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Article in Section Eight-O-One, Table Eight Dash One A, Subparagraph Eight of the subdivision ordinance, to reduce the number of off-site parking, off-lot parking spaces from one to point six, allowing a total of three-point-six spaces per unit, with three being on-site, one in the garage, two in the driveway, and point six being provided in an off-site parking area. On July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends final determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Doug. Yeah, anyone to represent the project?
Lynch Christian here on behalf of the developer, and Jason Gerhart with IFS Engineering. Mr. engineering.
Plank Commission Members, do you have any questions on Willow Glen, Section One,
There are no comments. Like the motion, we accept staff recommendation for final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the September fifth, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting.
Have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, and a second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendations for final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of the final plat approval at the September fifth, two thousand twenty-three Plank Commission. That should be the-
That should be the eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? I don't know, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, for no, motion carries. Thank you. Next item for final plat determination, Arcadia Springs North.
Arcadia Springs North, Section One, Phase Ten, lots one-three-seven to one-fifty-two, one-fifty-eight to one-seventy-two, and two-ten through two-thirteen. Project file is two-three-zero-four dash one-three-zero. Developer is Monarch Development Group Incorporated. The engineer is Gordon. The project is located in the Arden District, Tax Map Twelve, Parcel Twenty-Nine Point Three. The property is located on Van Cleesville Road, approximately two thousand foot east of its intersection with Diddy Road. Developer is proposing thirty-five single-family detached lots with approximately eight-point-six acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the July first, two thousand nineteen Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted waivers to Section Three-O-Five Point Four Point One, Article Two, Section Two-O-One, Town Home Definition, Article Five, Section Five-O-Four Point E, Table Five Point Three, and Article Eight, Section Eight-O-One, Table Eight Dash One A of the subdivision ordinance. At the September sixteenth, two thousand nineteen Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted an exception to Section Seven-O-Five Point One not to install sidewalks on Old Van Cleesville Road. On August tenth, two thousand twenty-three, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends the final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting.
Doug, does anybody want to represent the project?
Lynch Christian, representing the developer.
Plank Commission Members, do you have any questions for Arcadia Springs North, Section One?
I propose to accept staff recommendation for final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the September eighteen, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting.
Have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, and a second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendations for final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of the final plat approval at the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting. Many comments? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, for no, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Final, Southbrook, Section Two.
Southbrook, Section Two, Phase Two, lots three-twenty-two through three-twenty-six, three-thirty-two through three-fifty-three, and three-ninety-nine through four-hundred. File two-three-zero-six-two-one-zero, Chandler's Glen LLC is the developer. Gordon is the engineer. It's located in the Mill Creek District, Map Three, Parcel Nine. The property is located on Shiley Road, County Road Fourteen Over Two, approximately zero-point-three miles north of Hatchery Road, County Road Eleven Over Eight. This phase proposes twenty-nine single-family lots and twenty-eight townhouse lots on approximately twenty-point-six acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the September eighteen, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Doug. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Jason Gerhart with Integrity Federal Services and Hunter.
You guys got to stick around for the whole thing this evening. Plank Commission Members, do you have any questions for Jason or Hunter on Southbrook, Section Two, Phase Two?
Like the motion, we accept staff recommendation for final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at September eighteen, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting.
Have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, and a second by Mr. Truitt, to accept staff recommendations for final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the September eighteen, two thousand twenty-three Plank Commission meeting. Any additional comments? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, for no, motion carries. Thank you. Item ten, staff with counsel discussion action.
Thanks for your due diligence for the agenda this evening. I just wanted to take two minutes to introduce one of my new employees, Brian Mann. He is now going to be working for the planning department. He will also be incorporated into the engineering portion also. He currently lives in Hedgesville. He has a planning background and extensive in as-built bond reductions and that, that he worked for the City of Frederick. So he is now in his second week now, and we look forward to having him continue with this and work with both planning and engineering.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Anything from counsel?
Nothing from me.
Nothing to you? I do have a question for you, Doug. Like, you know, what, what can we do to help the developer pick up steam on Burrell? I just don't believe he's committed to finishing that boulevard.
Well, I think there's a large issue out by Lumen, because he's always up against the special DOH to pay the second entrance, which is on Rock, near the-
Rock Road, round corner.
Near the historical upper of the city.
Right.
Up there. There needs to be a second entrance there, and there's also left currently at nine, at the boulevard entrance. So I would, I would say- So I would, you know, I would say that that could possibly be causing driving defeat.
Okay. I'm just, you know, really concerned. A lot of the comments I get is that, you know, kids are at risk.
They are, I drive it every day.
And you've got people trying to get out to go to work, you know, they're not too patient maybe sometimes?
My kids are on that school bus.
Yeah.
So it stops right there in the road, people aren't always ready to that if they're in the winter time when it's colder, or it's raining. There is a lot of children, parents dropping children off, you know, suggestions, possibly a bus stop shelter. You know, possibly people could come together with the bus stop shelter in. Definitely, if nothing else, even if the Boulevard on the head, second half of it was adjusted so that there actually is a pull out of the way bus stop like you typically see in a large urban center where the bus can pull over, park, there's a sidewalk, kids can get out of the shelter, get on or get off the bus. The parents can park away, you know what I'm trying to say? To try to relieve all that congestion. We did talk to the school board about going back in there, they don't like the cul-de-sacs, which is one of the things in the day organs that we actually endeavor to change, and we based it, or the school bus. You know, to try to get that in there, and the school has did ask for shelters as well. So other than that, I don't know, I mean, we can certainly reach out to him, we can refer and come back to you and something.
Yeah, I think we need to do that, just to maybe satisfy some of the comments that I'm getting, I don't know if you're getting any or not.
I haven't, but I've seen it, so I know exactly what they're talking about. We can, like I said, I'll certainly reach out and see what, if we can get some more scheduled. We did ask for that on the last pod, did the outskirts remind, you know, there were some issues.
We'd appreciate it if you'd look into that. Anyone else have anything they want to add this evening?
Well, I've already discussed it with Anthony, and I don't, I don't see how we can really change it. But when we cancel a meeting, that throws a lot of people in tailspins, you know? Time is money. Especially if a person is waiting to close on a house that's built, and we have, so then they're backed up two more weeks. I don't know how we alleviate that, but, because I think it is stated that when a meeting is canceled, that will be, the business will be picked up at the next regular scheduled time. So there's almost no way to even do it the next day.
Should we go back to maybe entertain going back to COVID? That if there is a cancel, can't be here in person, we could do it virtually in some way, or?
That would be, you guys, the building is shut down, we can do it that way.
That means all employees are out, right?
I mean, it doesn't happen that often.
It doesn't happen that often. It's not the type of. The one with the holiday, with the governor, which does it around the last minute. They're there for the holiday, and then with that storm. There are a couple issues though. So this is a fellow body, if they comply with the meetings, that, you know, there's a public meeting. Yeah, okay, we're gonna be tomorrow instead. Do you have to have justification for emergency meeting? And because these are public hearings that are already noticed, publicly noticed, you have to go in the set. There's, obviously there's due state that they can be at the next regular extension meeting, regular meeting, you don't have to be public.
Okay.
A lot of handcuffs.
Eddie, you'll just have to do better at controlling the weather.
It'd be sunny for you. I got anything to do with it, the sun's gonna shine.
Doug said he would eat every week now, rather than every two weeks, he has that, so it's like a one way to life.
We'll take a chance on that.
Yeah, we'll take a chance on the cancellation. Any other comments?
I'm going to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second? Mr. Goff and Mr. Truitt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Being adjourned. Sorry, that took for a vote. Good golly mules.
It's like a waiver of a child, right? We could just kind of paper the way.
What's that again? Would you mind signing? I can do that, I can do that for all of you.
You already have to say it. Hey, Hunter, Doug said he likes his.
I like the.
He's got to bring it up to go in.
Traffic engineer for the county. Traffic engineer, he's the one that would.
If he has a whole stack, I'm gonna go back there.
He's the way we request information.
He's just a department highway, he's not on a drive.
Oh, maybe the world. Back to school, life's good.
Well, school starts tomorrow for them.